I'm here.
Great. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Long Hill Township for August 12th, 2025. The time is 7:30. I will turn it over to Madam Secretary to read our announcements.
Long time no see, everybody.
Yes, hi.
Hi, okay. Number one, call to order on statement of compliance. At that would notice that this meeting or hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any meeting or hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to a judicial meeting or hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as matter of procedure, it is the intention of the Planning Board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. Everybody turns them off. Number five, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Ms. Dill?
Present.
Mr. Hand is currently absent. Committeeman Lavender?
Here.
Mr. Lavareo?
Here.
Ms. Ogins?
Here.
Mr. Apalka is excused this evening. Vice Chairman Jones?
Present.
Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman, we have a court.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, the item number seven on our agenda of the meeting minutes, we're going to shelve till next time. Our secretary had some emergency fun, I'm sure, and was not able to get those out to us, so we'll have a full stack for our September meeting. Thank you. So next up on our agenda are a couple of resolutions. So the first one I call to your attention is the Giordano application number 25-05P. So I'll give you a minute to find that. Make sure you have checked to see if you have any questions or changes to that application.
Mr. Chairman, one correction, page 10, on the now therefore be resolved paragraph, that date just needs to get changed to the 12th of August, 2025. I drafted these a couple of months ago, so.
Yep, so just update that.
Just got to update that one. Same story with the other resolution when we get to it, but I think that was the only correction I noted.
Wait, we're on page 10?
It would be the now therefore be resolved.
Oh, yeah.
On, on page one, under the both variants, number three and number seven seem to be the same.
Okay, they're two different. The first one pertains to lot 16.01, number three, and then number seven pertains to lot 16.02. Yeah, there's no garage in either of the proposed lots, so they both, two variances.
Oh, I see, okay, I got it, thank you.
No worries.
And on page 12, I missed the date under the, I hereby certify the copy to jurisdiction.
Oh, good catch.
There were a couple typos on page six. The very top, first sentence says, "The site, none of which are proposed to be removed, though the applicants do intend, not to intend."
Okay.
And then in the, on numeral 10, right below it, about six lines up from the bottom, it starts with street on each proposed lot, and then number seven, it says "thought." It should, it should be "though" the proposed dwelling.
Yep.
I think I found one other.
How did you read it so fast?
I found the time to read it today. I think that was the only typos I found.
I'll take that, so I'll take that.
Any others?
So, Mr. Chair, this is the application that I presided over when you were.
Correct.
Out, so the, just to call out the not eligible would be Chairman Richardson, Mr. Hand, and Mr. Apalka. Otherwise, everyone else is eligible, those that are present.
Chris, I can change the typos on this one.
Appreciate that.
Great, well, is there a motion to accept this resolution with amendments as discussed?
So moved.
Second.
Committeeman Lavender?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Ogins?
Yes.
Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Mr. Lavareo?
Yes.
If you can carry us.
Excellent. Okay, next up is an application, just trying to make sure I've got the date. Yes, this is the lower application, number 25-8P. Take a second to just check that. We have the same.
Yeah, same correction.
Update to the date.
Let's check, Mr. Chairman, page 10, third paragraph, now therefore, now therefore be resolved on this 12th day of August, 2025, it should state, and then on, I think probably on the last page two, oh no, Deb, you got this one right.
Those two I forgot.
On the certify, there you go. That was the only correction.
No pressure, Robert.
Oh, I found, I found a couple typos on this one. On page six, number eight, "I," first line, says, the last sentence says, the closest, it should say, "the closest fire hydrant to the property," instead of closet.
I'm sorry, what, what page?
Page six.
Number eight, right.
"I."
Oh, "I," I'm questioning.
It should say.
Oh, closet, not the closet.
It's not a closet fire hydrant, it's the closest fire hydrant, right? And then, then the next, page seven, 11, "I," it's, Mr. Shaw testified that "we," it should say, "he was concerned."
Mr. Lavareo, before you move on, a space between item, paragraph nine and paragraph 10, I think should be out of this.
Oh, yeah, that's that one.
We're really getting.
Yeah, we're really getting down the tiki tack here.
Getting right.
I found a capitalization. Just kidding.
All right, so on page eight, 17, about, it's the fifth line down, the sentence that says, "The board finds that any adverse impact that may result from the proposal on the," I think it should say, "property."
No, it's just a remove.
Or you can take, you can take the, "on the out." Right, you could just take the "on the out."
Yep.
You can do it either way, right? And then, what else? On nine, numeral 23, fourth line down, it says applicant, so it should say applicants propose, right? So that gets that one right. And then I had one other, well, there's one more typo I found. On page 10, number three, the line three far right, it, "fire" is misspelled.
Oh, "free."
Okay, but then I, I had one question. We had, we had a discussion during that meeting about review by the fire department of the driveway situation, and the applicant said that he had had it reviewed by the fire inspector. And I wasn't sure how we left that, was, we were going to say that that was enough for the review of fire access to the properties, or was he going to talk to the fire department, or how was that finally left? I don't recall, I, I have in my notes that we talked about it, but I don't have a, I have something that says, there was nothing in writing from the fire department or emergency management, there was only a discussion with the fire inspector. Because we talked about the driveway from.
As a pass through, right?
Right, in order to get from the.
East to west or west to east?
West to east.
Either way.
Right, because it went up to the front of the house, and then it was kind of a.
Because there's a crazy left hand turn when you were traveling.
Right.
East.
Right. And we had had a discussion about, was that, you know, well enough discussed.
Yep.
For this, and I don't know if that was really something that had to be in this resolution, or was going to be covered when the drawings were finalized.
Wasn't there some discussion of accessing the right of way?
There was.
There was also discussion on the right.
Because it goes straight through the sewer right of way? But I agree, I don't recall a resolution to that particular issue, or.
And is it something that comes, it has to be in this resolution, or is it, could it be covered while they proceed with permits for the property?
Yeah, so in other words, can it be caught down the road in the process?
Would it be caught?
That'd be a question, Deb, but would there be another review when they get construction permits?
For there being a pass through?
Yeah, for access, the issue is accessibility for fire.
Right.
Wouldn't there be a review when they go for construction permits?
No.
Yeah.
No, if it's, the only review there would be, if it was decided by the board, if it was on the site plan, then it would be, as on the site plan, then our engineer, the township engineer then, and Joe being one of the same, would be responsible for making sure that that comes through, if it's on the site plan. I don't remember if it was on the site plan or not.
Right, I neglected to bring my file with me, because I don't typically do when we're adopting resolutions, but I, I don't recall there being a specific condition regarding general access for the fire, for fire trucks.
Right, and I recall that the applicant was somewhat opposed to that because it is private property, and then wanting to remain private property as that's a, that's not a town easement, that's a.
I thought the conversation was going in a direction of vacating that section of Division Ave. And we would have to consider a Division Ave east and a Division Ave west.
Delaware.
Delaware, sorry, thank you, thank you very much, I have us on clearly on the other side of town. That's what I thought, I recall from the conversation, there wasn't an action for.
Yeah, that's in it.
Is that this one that you're thinking of, look at number five?
That's in the rest.
That is correct.
Yeah, so the township, so it retains, is it a right of way that they have, or is it an easement?
It's an easement.
It's an easement, right.
So the township doesn't have a right of way across the property.
So, in, in point number five?
Right.
It talks about that?
Yeah.
And it says something, I think it's terminate?
What would be terminated?
Terminate, number five?
Terminate.
Page 10.
10? Number five?
Yeah, the terminate.
Terminate, so that's a proper word?
Yeah, so if the town, this condition, if the township wants them to, wants to connect it, the applicant would have to, the applicant, the future property owner would be required to allow the township to connect it. So I think, I think that kind of covers that, should the town wanted.
So that's separate from the.
Exert its rights? Yeah. But as far as the fire access, because condition three did give, I know it was discussed, at least giving the fire department access through Knox boxes to get to, if they.
That's right, they put gates up.
Right. But again, I don't think it was an actual stipulated to condition at the time.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think the engineer determined that there was going to be an access issue based on the driveway configuration, even though there was kind of a zig and a zag to get to the second home.
I just don't like that whole piece. It's just clunky. It should be locked tight, whether we're going to allow for the access, or we're not going to allow for that consideration. Here you got firemen jumping out of trucks, trying to open up a gate to get through. I would almost, Mr. Chair, is table this, everybody go back, watch the video again to make sure that it is right, that that is where we landed on. And table this to our next meeting, if we can do that. Because it seems like there's some vagueness, and the fact that I'm marked not eligible, and I know, and part of the conversation, I'm probably, that's probably incorrect as well.
Well, no, you abstained from the vote.
I abstained?
Correct.
Very good.
Right, you did participate.
Which means you can't vote on the resolution.
That should be marked as abstained, then.
Okay.
It says I'm not eligible, but there should be a reason, there should be a reason.
Yeah, you're not eligible because you abstained.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
If you want, I can, I can mark.
Because I don't remember, I don't remember not being here, so that's why.
Right, right.
I would put, I would abstain, so that way.
Do you want to mark it as abstained, that why you're not eligible?
That's right.
Okay.
What I would suggest is mark both, abstain and not eligible, and you're doubly covered.
So, again, I would go back, Mr. Chair.
Double down.
Yeah, so I would go back, Mr. Chair, if, if this is still a point of confusion, then we should go back and listen to the tape again, just to get clarity on it. And that gives you time to get.
Yeah, I would, I would just note that, I know Blizz and Joe also reviewed, we sent it to them, we sent it to the applicant's attorney. If I missed it, I would think they would have caught it. I can't speak if I'm around here, obviously.
I can't vote on it, so.
I just want to, I think it's a good suggestion, if other people agree, I don't think there's any huge time pressure, I'd rather shelve it for the first meeting in September to resolve this, and I just want to make sure we've accurately captured now what we're going to look at, because I think that's important.
So there are two things that I hear being discussed that involve fire department, but the one in here, I think is actually pretty clear from what the discussion was, because they had no intention of putting gates up.
Correct.
Originally.
That's what I remember.
But they said, if they made a change to put the gates up, they knew they had to provide the Knox boxes for the fire access to get into the property. And that's, that's exactly what this says, so I, I'm okay with that statement, the, and I'm just asking a question about whether the discussion around getting around that corner to get to the second home by a fire truck had been discussed with the right individual, right? Because a fire inspector, I'm not, I'm not sure that's within his wheelhouse, his jurisdiction. But I don't know for sure, so that, that's why I asked the question.
I think the action item is, before the next meeting, we should refer this over to, Deb, who we think would be the best person to kind of look at that.
Well, it was sent to the fire people in, the fire inspector, the fire official in the beginning.
Okay, and they were fine with.
I don't believe he had any comments, yes.
Okay, so I think that's what we're checking, we're just trying to make sure, because we're having a vague recollection, I'd rather be sure.
I don't want to kick the can on this, I just want to make sure that everyone's comfortable with what they're going to vote on.
Procedurally speaking, you know, the board can't really open this up for further deliberations or give any input, because the application, it's over, and the vote's been.
Well, and I will say that I don't think any of the emergency services were necessarily that excited about the design, as the board wasn't that excited about the design, but again, it's private property, so it's, we don't really have.
I don't think we're suggesting opening up deliberations around some, we're just, we're trying to make sure we've accurately captured in the resolution what was discussed.
I'm just saying, if it were to go, if we were to say, oh, we should, the fire department should take another look on this before we go on the resolution, I'd have to say that would probably be a problem.
Yeah, okay.
But I guess the question is whether or not, when the board made, rendered its decision, did it intend to apply a condition that fire access would be provided through the, you know, by the ladder?
So I'm not convinced that that's what we did during the discussion, that we.
Right.
Made it a condition.
I don't.
I thought we were leaning away from that.
Yeah.
To not allow.
But, no, it's a good point, all we can do is go back and see what we accurate, what the accuracy of what the outcome was from the hearing, period. We can't reopen up the application, so.
That's fine.
So we'll do that, and we'll come back, and in the meantime, you can update the resolution, and we'll can recirculate this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll review my notes as well, and then jump, check the tape.
Okay.
If I was here for this, or should I know? Steve covered this one, I can.
Okay, so, one out of two, thank you again, Robert, for your diligence, you got MVP tonight for your review of the resolution.
I already gave him his prize.
Next item is a master plan consistency review. This is associated with ordinance 57-25, and this is an ordinance amending section 171.1D of the Township Land Use Ordinance regarding removing references to Historic Preservation Commission and replacing with references to the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. So this was something brought to our attention through the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, in that they wanted a consistent nomenclature in our town ordinance. I think this is relatively straightforward, you'll see attached to the consistency review that I guess we'll need to affirm here, you'll see the actual change to the ordinance. So, any questions with regards to this? This is pretty straightforward.
If I can just get off, Mr. Chairman, just because I think Ms. Ogins and Mr. Lavareo, I don't know if they've been here for master, have you guys been here for a master plan consistency review yet?
No, we both worked on the master plan, but we've not been here for review.
Okay, so when an ordinance, here's the basic process, governing body introduces an ordinance, it comes to the board, this board, for master plan consistency review, then it goes back to the governing body for final adoption, right? At this stage, you need to make the decision whether or not the ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan, that's the standard.
Double negative.
It's a double negative, right?
Double negative, yes.
But, yes. It's basically not affirming that it's consistent, it's just saying that it's not inconsistent, that, that's how it is. I didn't make the law, I just tell you what it is, right? So that's really the question before you, so, just so you understand what the task is, so to speak.
I think just a point of clarity, right? The difference between a committee and a commission has different governing body rules, and they are not perceived as a commission, they are an advisory committee, so they are just consulted, and they provide.
Input.
Input, and that's it. So that's the reason why they want to be properly reflected as a advisory committee and not a advisory commission, so hence the, the change. I'm sorry.
Just to further what Chris said, when the planning board is revising ordinances, and even if the planning board decides without the direction, we're being given direction from the governing body, the planning board can come up with a new ordinance, basically for the land use, almost at any time, to which, once this board is comfortable with that ordinance, it goes to the governing body. They do their first reading, it comes back to us again for the master plan consistency review.
All right. So we will be, in effect, voting then with regards to this resolution that stipulates that this particular ordinance now is not inconsistent with the township's master plan.
Right.
Is everybody clear on that? So you might want to just read through this ordinance. Did we, did we need a resolution number, when does that, or is that?
I'll, I'll put that in, typically up to this point, I had been preparing just a standard letter.
Okay.
Going to the clerk and to the governing body, but Chris and Steve prefer the resolution, so we'll be using the resolution.
That's right, I was wondering why we didn't have any templates for you, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Steve said do it, I did, so, yeah.
So we'll just find, I'll just fill in the blanks after we do the vote tonight, and go from there.
Sorry, stuff.
No, no, it's fine, I'm fine.
Just for, for a quick question, the township is required to have an historic commission? Or we're not required to have a commission or a committee or anything historic?
I don't think it's a constitutional requirement that you need.
No, it's not necessarily a requirement, what this is, is, as Mr. Jones just referred to, is clarifying the scope. They're wishing to, to really take on more of a scope of an advisory, an advisory nature instead of a commission nature, which has different duties.
They were never designated to be a commission.
That's correct.
Oh, this is actually just a correction and nomenclature.
This is legacy from, from previous administrations, and it's just kind of stuck there, and they've actually come back and said, we are not that.
Right.
And we are this, and again, it goes back to, as a commission, you need to have a whole governing body, you need to have.
But just, just a point of clarification, though, because unless this is incorrect, they're adding, they're adding advisory, because it was a Historic Preservation Commission, not, there was no advisory in commission.
It's not going to be H-P-A-C.
Right.
It's been H-PAC. So the bold it underlines is to change to, and strike through as a removal.
That may not be correct, then.
No, I think the reason.
What's not correct?
Well, if it had always had the advisory in it, were.
No, it did not.
The reason.
It did not.
It should have.
The reason why.
It should have, but it was H-P-C.
But we called it H-PAC for years.
Right, but H-P-C has been what's been in this ordinance.
Right, which was wrong.
So now, and that's false, and that's incorrect, so the correct is H-PAC.
Right.
Hold on a second. I hate to add a monkey wrench to this, but the reason it says what it says with commission is because that's pulled directly from the statute, so that, this is speaking to who can be hold office on the planning board, right? So the language that you see, the original language, was directly copied and pasted from the statute, I'm trying to pull the citation right now.
That's a pretty big monkey wrench.
Right, yeah.
That just means more stuff comes out.
That's something for the governing body, you might want to take that back to them, Scott, because I don't, in the event the board, or the township does decide to create an advisory commission, this would be outdated if you go through this, not that you guys ever would, or I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but the reason why it exists like that is because the commission have, holds certain statutory powers where it can kind of, you know, set conditions on applications and things like that.
Right.
So that's why there's the restriction on who can be on the zoning board.
So that, so that last sentence needs to be struck.
So like, can we rather just sort of cherry pick from this? We're all looking at D, right?
Yes.
All right, so let's read this together.
Because we can edit it now.
Yeah, all right. So six other citizens of the municipality to be appointed by the mayor, the members of, of class four. Shall hold no other municipal office position or employment except in the case of the nine-member boards. One such member may be a member of the zoning board of adjustment or historic preservation, blah, blah. No member of the board of education may be a class four, except that in the case of a nine-member board, one class four may be a member of the board of ed. If there be a municipal environmental commission, the member of the environmental commission who is also a member of the planning board is required by blah, 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 shall be a class four planning board member, unless there be among the class four or alternate members of the planning board, both a member of the zoning board of adjustment or historic preservation, blah, blah, and a member of the board of ed, in which case the member common to the planning board municipal environmental commission shall be deemed a class two member of the planning board. For the purpose of this section, membership on a municipal board or commission, either of which is the advisory committee, right? Whose function is advisory in nature, and the establishment in which is discretionary and not required by statute, shall not be considered the holding of municipal office.
That actually is all accurate. I know it's a lot of extra words, but what this is saying, because this is not a commission now.
Right.
Right, is that there is more freedom for those members to be on these different boards.
That's right.
Right?
So basically, it's saying, none of this applies to historic, so it's good.
Yes.
No.
Well, it's not good.
Why not?
What you're doing with this change is you're restricting the membership of the planning board with respect to people who are on the historic preservation advisory committee. This is borrowed straight from the MLU.
Okay, so why don't we just take out?
Yeah, what I would recommend is that it say, maybe a member of the zoning board of adjustment or historic preservation advisory commission.
Committee.
No, should there be an advisory commission? Does that make sense?
No.
Which there is, no.
No, there's not a commission.
That's right.
Committee.
Right, but the committee's advisory in nature, that's why you don't need to necessarily restrict.
Well, it says here, though, may, maybe a member, right? So there's a condition in there, so it doesn't matter.
Maybe a member, maybe a member of the board of education.
No, we're looking at the second.
Yeah, I seem to recall there was a.
Maybe a member. Maybe a member of the zoning board. Or historic preservation.
Better than I know.
Was this the only version with just?
LE one seventy-one.
And there was no, because there was a discussion, I wish I'd, I didn't bring my phone on.
It's all kind of far removed from what this board needs to consider. I don't think it's inconsistent with the master plan. Just with that discreet avenue of having to look at this. But, again, I would advise the governing body, not the township attorney, but you should keep it to just historic preservation commission, should there be one. Because I just don't think you want to go ahead and restrict the, and it's up to you, I mean, if you want to restrict, you know, members of the advisory committee from being on the planning board in a certain kind.
Yeah, let me, let me, is the intent here to recommend or ensure that we have somebody here on H-PAC?
No.
Then why don't you just take it out completely?
Yeah, what, see, this is borrowed straight from, it's NJISA forty point fifty-five D dash twenty-three. Members of the class four shall hold another municipal office, et cetera, et cetera.
Can we just remove D? Just strike the whole thing? Does it have to be in here?
Well, what I'm saying is, is just, just wax out any mention of H-PAC. Since obviously, there's no restrictions. We can always go back later if we decide to make a commission and then.
Well, that's what the, yeah, that's what, you and the governing body decide for here, it's just whether or not it's anything that's with the master plan, but.
I think what's throwing us is we're changing the name and they're trying to preserve, they're trying to set, you know, that's coming right out of law with the commission membership, right? And what we're saying is, we want freedom for members of H-PAC to certainly be potential members of these different boards.
Exactly.
That's all we're saying.
If you change it, then you're restricting, the whole point of having a commission versus a committee is that the committee's advisory in nature, right? If it's a commission, it has, it has powers.
But I, I, I mean, maybe I'm misreading this, I thought the references to commission are the things that are limiting.
They are.
Right.
Right, exactly.
But we've changed the name, so it doesn't apply. It's kind of like, dulcet suspenders. It, this doesn't even apply now because it's not a commission.
But, but if you change it to committee, now it applies to the committee instead of.
So then it sounds like, don't even change it now.
There's no reason to change it.
There's no reason to change it, that's.
That's essentially what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay.
Other than, other than you just say historic preservation advisory.
Please, is there a lawyer to help us out of this?
This is gonna, but this is gonna take H-PAC and they're gonna get wrapped around the axle on this.
That's my point.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying is, is just take out any reference to it here, you can always add it later, it's, it's, it's an ordinance.
You could get rid of this ordinance entirely, the MLU still governs.
Because the reason I'm confused is it's not like this ordinance is what is installing the committee.
Right.
Right.
This is just, this is just regarding, this is just membership.
I think they misunderstood what, they being the historic preservation committee, misunderstood what this.
Ordinance does.
Ordinance does, yeah, exactly.
So that's why I'm a little bit like. I also think doing this is, is fine and it really doesn't do anything except what you're saying, which is, it's now just, where's the ordinance that installs the actual committee, though? Is there one?
I'm sure there is some.
Like, isn't that what we should be?
I don't remember seeing one, I don't think I tie back to one here.
I think they wanted to just make sure that all the references to advisory commission were changed to committee. And then they went a little bit too far ahead over their skis and now they're trying to change.
Well, that's because the, I think the, whatever points of an actual committee is not in the land use. This is just dealing directly with land use and boards.
Right.
Versus the governing body having the authority to appoint people to the actual committee.
Right, hence is why it's under the, the land use section, why it's even before us to begin with, is because it's under the land use ordinance.
Yeah, so then I, obviously, we just change this like it is, it's not inconsistent with the master plan and, not that I'm trying to put.
No, you're right, I mean, it's, in my legal opinion, it really has, it's, it's neutral to the master plan, it's not.
Right.
It's just, it's just legally speaking, I think you're, I don't think this is accomplishing.
Do we even send a recommendation back saying, leave as is, don't change? That's what I'm kind of hearing people saying.
Yeah, but that's two names. What's got them all twisted up is the fact that everything else says H-PAC. And this says this. So which is it?
Where are they?
This is where they get it.
Right.
So why can't we just, what's wrong with just making it H-PAC? I don't understand. I understand this thing about commission and all that kind of stuff, either take it out, so they don't have to deal with it.
Right, so this is copied direct, as it was, not as they're proposing, was copied directly from the municipal land use law. Section twenty-three.
So from the MLU, and that was then put right into our code books.
Correct.
But we're changing this term. So, again, by changing this term, does this somehow upset the membership? Because this is only dealing with the class four member.
Yes. It upset.
By making a change to the, the advisory.
Parent ordinance?
I'm sorry?
Have you changed the, the non-land use ordinance?
I'll have to go back and look at that. You mean the one that establishes the H-PAC? I was just finding that.
By doing this, you're essentially, not us, the governing body, would essentially be restricting who could be a class four planning board member.
And it would be telling the H-PAC folks they cannot.
Right, well, not that they can entirely, but, you know, under certain conditions, like, you know, one such member may be a member of the zoning board of adjustment or historic preservation committee, right? That means you're restricting, let's say, two people.
Yeah, you're restricting, you're either with this or that.
You're adding unnecessary restriction that doesn't align with the statute, that's basically what it is. Right, so you could have a situation where you have two people on the H-PAC and they want to be on the board, but if you change the ordinance, well, too bad, only one of you can, can join for an arbitrary reason that really is surrounding.
Or you can only join one of the two boards and that's it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And with a town of very few volunteers.
That's the way it is now.
No, it's not, it's not.
It's limited to the H, um, H-P-C, not H, not H-PAC.
Right, which doesn't exist.
And the commission doesn't exist. This H-P-C does not exist.
Right?
The statute presumes that, you know, it exists to.
In, in the MLU. The H-P-C.
Yeah, H-P-C is what's in the statute. It says, um, yeah. Like I said, it's copied, exactly what you see without committee is exactly how it reads in the statute.
Verbatim.
Yeah, verbatim.
Alright, so guys, what are we gonna do here? I mean, I think we can, it seems to me we can vote again on the resolution that it's not inconsistent.
Yeah, it's not inconsistent with the master, it's, it's neutral as to the master plan, but, you know, just, you know.
Like, send, uh, not inconsistent, but here's something we identified.
You want, I can just shoot an email to the township attorney and let them know.
Well, we can, we can, the board can recommend changes, sure. They can, we can, they can say, you can say that it's not inconsistent and, but these are the changes we recommend.
I think it's where we should vote that, assuming we all agree, that it's not inconsistent. But y'all need to look into whether this is changed everywhere.
Yeah, my, my suggestion would be, it should read, uh, I'm just gonna start back, zoning board of adjustment or historic preservation advisory commission, should there be one? Something along those lines, and then on the second change, um, both a member of the zoning board of adjustment or historic preservation advisory commission, should there be one? Basically, you know, should.
So you're softening it.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just.
It's like taking it out, for a practical purpose.
What's that?
It's like taking it out.
Without taking.
As it, without taking it out.
Right, right, it, it sort of accomplishes what they want in the sense that, okay, we're acknowledging that there isn't a historic advisory.
Commission.
Let me ask, let me ask you a question, though. Is shade tree mentioned in there?
Is what?
No.
Shade tree commission.
No.
No.
It's not in the statute.
But we just have, uh, like a convention that someone be on the shade tree commission, right?
I think it's a requirement to be a part of some commission, right?
For class one, two, and three. Well, class two, yes. Class two, yeah.
Class two can be any kind of municipal employee. Like towns where like the fire chief is the, is the class two.
Could even be a code enforcement officer.
Right, yeah. You want to be class two?
Uh-huh.
You can be class two, I guess they're.
I could be class two, too, if I was the board secretary. Um, I, let me ask you guys this, was, this was, these changes were directed to our planner, Liz, to make, correct?
I, I don't know where.
Were you the board?
I brought this.
So.
I brought that from the worksheet because we were approached by H-PAC saying that this was wrong, that they're not a commission, that they're an advisory committee. So I said, fine, I'll take a look at it, and I did look at it, and I said, okay, we can make these changes, and does that fit? And then that's when we started the process.
So.
Because I know, we, I know we discussed this when we, when we had discussions preparing this. But I can't recall what, where we landed. I think we landed in, just keep the MLU language, because that is the law. And, uh, because we changed the name, it doesn't really affect
Right.
the membership.
Right, exactly, you got to follow the MLU regardless, so.
Right, so I, I don't even know if your suggested change is necessary, it's okay, should there be one?
It's really throwing them a bone and then you want something, you know.
Well, and the reason I ask is because Liz is obviously not here tonight.
Right, I think she could add to that.
So do we want to ask the township committee to table this for another meeting? To hold off, because they're planning to do the second reading tomorrow night. So do we ask them to table it until we have Liz confirm what all of your questions are?
I mean, how are people feeling? I mean, I.
I feel like we're overcomplicating this.
I think so, too, because I think it reads.
I feel it, I'm missing the goal. The, the goal is the members of the now, um, historic preservation commission want to have more flexibility to be on other committees?
Yes.
Yes, so the way that the statute is designed is so that a class four member, which is pretty much everyone, I think Teresa's the class two and Scott, you're the class three. Everybody else, the way this is, the statute works is that you can't hold, you can't simultaneously be, be a class four member and then be like the mayor or the governing body member, right? That's reserved for the class, you know, the class one or the class three or class two, right? However, they make exceptions if you're on the board of adjustment or on the historic preservation commission, right? But, that means only one person can be from either of those boards on this board at the same time, right? So if you keep it as statute normally is, without any changes, whoever's on the historic advisory committee, everybody on this, every class four here could be a historic preservation advisory committee member. If you change it, then only one person from that committee can be on this board.
So if you keep it a commission, only one person, if you make it a committee, it's unlimited?
Correct. Pursuant to the statute. But if you change it this way, you have the statute and the ordinance, then you change the ordinance, then you're restricting it unnecessarily, and it doesn't align with what the, the goal of the.
So do you want to hear the ordinance on the creation of the historic preservation advisory committee? Alright. And this is, uh, two thirty-five dot one. Hereby established historic preservation advisory committee consisting of nine regular members, um, shall consist of at least one member of each of the following classes, a class A, someone who knows building, design, construction, architecture, may reside outside the township. Class B, a person who's knowledgeable with a demonstrated interest in local history, may reside outside the township. C shall be township residents who are not a designated A or B member. Mayor shall appoint all members, um, uh, it's just about expiration and stuff. Shall elect a chair, vice chair, and a secretary, shall obtain legal counsel from the attorney. No member shall be permitted to act on any matter which is direct of or personal financial interest. May be removed by public hearing by the committee. Responsibilities. Prepare survey of historic sites, make recommendations to the planning board on historic preservation plan element, the master plan, blah, blah, blah. Advise the planning board on the inclusion of historic sites. Advise the planning board and board of adjustment on applications for development pursuant. Collaborate with the township historian, et cetera. Advise the mayor and township committee of the needs of repairs, preservation, et cetera. Upon agreement with the township committee regarding the cost of the projects, uh, if appropriate, carry out other such advisory educational information. Second, referral of board applications. Planning board and board of adjustment shall refer to the H-PAC every application for development submitted to either board for development on historic sites identifying any component element of the master plan. This referable shall be, referral shall be made when the application for development is deemed complete or scheduled for a hearing. Failure to refer the application as required shall not invalidate any hearing or proceeding. So best effort, right? This, the H-PAC may provide its advice, which shall be conveyed through its delegation of one member or staff to testify orally at the hearing, explaining, da, 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 da. Referral of permit applications, all applications for issuance of permits pertaining to historic sites shall be referred to the H-PAC for not an advisory report concerning historic preservation, any of these projects, which aspects were determined by approval. They're supposed to, shall submit its advisory report to the construction official. When time does not allow for the submission of a permit application to the full committee, the chair may act in place of the full committee. Shall be guided by the filing design guidelines, every effort should be made compatible use, da, 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 da. Okay. So basically, all they do is advise, then it's a best effort. And so, why are they in, in our ordinance, designating members of the planning board?
That's just that they shouldn't.
Right?
Why? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That's the question.
They shouldn't be.
They shouldn't be, so does that say, let's just wax more historical preservation advisory commission committee in those two places? Just make those pieces disappear and call it a day on it? Because it's not a commission. We don't have a commission.
So, so the challenge question is, does that change the ordinance in any way, shape, or form, or does the MLU supersede our ordinance?
I think the MLU will supersede, but at the same time, like.
So, then the que, right, so then the question, my next question is, does Long Hill Township have a historic preservation committee at this time?
Yes.
Yes.
Committee or commission?
I'm sorry, or historic preservation commission at this time?
No.
So then, with it being, with H-P-C, historic preservation commission in the ordinance today, the fact that we don't have a historic preservation commission, it's null, it's moot.
Right.
Correct.
That's why Scott said.
There's really no reason.
There's no reason to change it, but you'll make it clear for people and avoid long discussions like this in the future.
Okay.
Exactly.
Because someone's gonna go searching for the commission, they're not gonna find it, and they're gonna waste our time looking for it.
And I just tried to, to do a search on the Long Hill Township website to see if that was there.
Here are my notes in talking with, with H-PAC, with Fred Hunt. So, we did talk about this last sentence, and he said, for the purp, you know, we know the last sentence in this, um, section D. And so, H-PAC members are just plain citizens when it comes to appointments to the planning board, in this case. Not limited to one.
That's how they're supposed to be.
Correct. And so there really is no reason in changing the wording of the ordinance. A simple deletion would suffice, since the last sentence allows any number of H-PAC members, as we just talked about, to be on the planning board as ordinary citizen class four members.
Right. Yeah.
Right?
Right.
So I don't see, though, that to be a problem, why would we want to limit that, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We want to, we want to keep our options open.
Yeah. So you should keep the ordinance at, it should be kept as is.
Right.
Delete historic preservation advisory commission entirely, or historic preservation commission, should one exist?
I'd say delete it, because in the future, someone's going to make a decision about who can be on the planning board from H-PAC. And they're not gonna understand what we talked about today.
They can do that, that's what I want.
Just take it out.
Someone's gonna say the commission, the, the committee, it's the same thing. It's the intent.
But, again, because we changed the name, yes, I know, but the, the reference in the law is still with the commission part, so we didn't want, but we've already said that.
We don't have a commission, so it doesn't matter.
Exactly.
We have.
We're in a circular.
Alright, yeah, it, it doubles back on itself, so, so what's the, so you brought up the bone, so how do we resolve this?
I would say, motion second, that it's not inconsistent with the master plan, however, I'd note advising the, the governing body that it doesn't necessarily make sense to do that, given the discussion we just had. And instead, they should just delete historic preservation advisory commission entirely and don't replace it with anything.
Delete any reference to the historic preservation advisory committee?
Or commission.
Commission, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, is there?
Deb, you look quiz.
I am so confused. I have no idea what.
This is, we're getting very deep in the, in the weeds here.
Yeah, I am.
And this is just three words in one ordinance, wait till we get to the meat and potatoes of other stuff.
Don't worry, the monkey's on my back for tomorrow night.
Yeah, so, yeah, trying to explain that.
I gotta send something to Megan or else she's gonna flip out on me.
No, just tell her, not inconsistent, right?
Okay.
But we recommend remove any reference to historic preservation. Commission.
Or committee.
After we make a motion second and vote on it, twice.
Right. So is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, Committeeman Lavender.
Yes.
Mr. Laverrario.
Yes.
Ms. Dill.
Yes.
Ms. Ogins.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
This is voting on the not inconsistent. Yes.
Chairman Richardson.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, so I am going to send.
Deb, do you want me to try to explain it a little bit more detailed?
I would love for you to do that for me, first thing in the morning, Chris.
I'll, I'll do my best.
And then I can send it to Megan and we're good.
Right, yeah.
I'm going to go home and watch this one again, because we're so excited.
If I write it out, it'll make a lot more sense than me just speaking.
I thought we were voting twice.
Are we voting twice?
No.
No, don't have to.
The motion was not inconsistent, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we can make whatever recommendation.
With the recommendation that, with the recommendation. As I said, opened up a camera where I was at when I apologized, but I think it was needed.
No, you're, you're not apologizing.
I should.
And by the way, we have two more consistency reviews at the next meeting, so.
Either of them involve the historic?
They do not.
We're going to, we're going to get real good at consistency reviews.
These are angels dancing on heads of pigs.
The ones that are going tomorrow.
Okay, so moving right along, we have now arrived at an ORC update. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will, I'm sad to say that the ORC has not met for quite some time here in the summer months due to conflicting schedules, mostly on my, on my side, due to a number of priorities that came up at work. So, we have not met. However, we do have a bunch of stuff still in the pipeline that has kind of stalled simply because we were working on the master plan, which was a priority, as well as the state's master plan. That was also a priority. And then there was the, and when I'm saying the master plan, I'm also referring to the Fairshare Housing Agreement Round, I think Number Four was the one we were on, right?
Yes.
So, those were all taken priority. That kind of tabled everything that we were doing. But some of the items that we have in the pipeline is, we were looking at houses of worship. We were looking at ground floor apartments. We were looking at sheds. We were looking at a host of other things, which I think is about to get rekindled and restarted again. So, we'll get that up for, I guess a couple of things are coming back to us, as you said, Teresa, from the Township tomorrow. So, more to come on that. But some things that we've started working on was also maximum setback in the BD zone, which is that Valley Road corridor. And taking a look at the properties and trying to figure out what the maximum setback for the commercial properties along Valley Road would be, as this is the gateway into and through the heart of our commercial zone. So, we started work on that and then had to table it for various reasons. And what I would like to do, and to put in, to charge this body, is tomorrow I will send out a list of things that need an owner and to take, and then take that on with the list of changes that need to, to be reviewed and start working through those with the template that I had provided previously. So, for instance, Sterling, Sterling Village, David Hand has taken that on, as he's shown an interest in that area, and wants to lead the several, I think there's like eight items for him to review. But we still have Myersville, we still have Millington, and we still have Gillette. All of these areas need to be reviewed. There's also the work that Teresa did with the renaming of the various zones that is, I think, still sitting with our planner. So, again, something else that got tabled. And that also leads to, Mr. Chair, your zoning maps that has a host of things that will also be touched. So, so my, my action today will be, I will send around a list of things that need to, that I need an owner and request whoever wants to take that on to just come back to me, saying that you'll take that on, I'll put your name to it. And then we'll work together as the ORC. We'll talk about it here. And this is, this is, this is one of those things that just keeps on giving. There's no, there's no end game here. It is working on the stuff at hand and keeping things moving along. And I also am proud to say that Mr., Mr. L. has decided to accept my ask for him to join the ORC and he has, he's accepted through voluntold, of course. So, thank you, Joe, for stepping up and we'll get you invited to, to our meetings. So, that's where we are. The other thing I will ask is, when we bring these items, I will promise you, you will have it a week in advance, that we discuss in its entirety all the things that we want to amend in that ordinance. Because I think it's, it can be somewhat frustrating where we think we've got everything covered and then all of a sudden, something comes out of left field. I realize that it's always, that will be the case from time to time. But it is important that we try to get any of the changes that we want for those ordinances, that we get them through the pipeline and that we identify, even if it's not directly something you were working on, but you saw a piece hanging off that just doesn't seem right. Let's talk about it. Because I think one thing that we don't want to do is waste our time, come to a meeting, we're focused, and then all of a sudden, there's this thing that comes out of left field that derails the whole thing.
Yeah, can I make a comment on that, Tom?
Yes.
I was thinking, we have not discussed this, but so, I was thinking something separately similar, which was, while the ORC is working very diligently on a, on a lot of these ordinances, I would recommend that when we bring them forth, that we have like one discussion and like every single time we bring it back, we can't keep bringing it back with like additional discussion. So, like Tom said, getting it a week in advance to make an effort to get your comments gathered ahead of time. And if you're not going to be at a meeting, it's kind of, I think the onus is on that Planning Board member to send their comments ahead of time and not that we all hold off another two weeks.
Yes.
That's my opinion. I don't know if everybody agrees, but I think that if you're not going to make a meeting, it doesn't mean that now the whole ordinance waits two weeks or four weeks or however long to bring comments down. I know, I know I have to miss meetings for work sometimes and I would have no problem saying that that's on me and I have to submit my comments ahead of time if I want to be heard.
Makes sense.
Well said.
Yeah, I support that wholeheartedly. I know everyone's got their, their day jobs. And yeah, I mean, look, this one here, we were just talking about, that was submitted back in March. Obviously, we had other priorities and that's always going to be the case. My day job has that as well. So, I think what becomes frustrating is us trying to go back six to eight weeks and recall exactly what was it that we were trying to achieve or what derailed us. Or we're this close and then all of a sudden, we get blindsided. So, again, I respect everybody. I respect your opinion. I respect your point of view. But what I'm asking for is that when we talk about it, let's make it the topic to talk about. Let's iron through everything and then get it ready for sending up to the TC.
I mean, just to add, I mean, a, a good team supports each other. We all have day jobs here. This isn't our full-time commitment. So, I think the important thing is that you've got your less than a quorum team, your ORC team, and, you know, should be engaged to the best of their ability to help the process. But everybody on this board has an important part. And, and from my perspective, this is the singular biggest priority now through the end of the year, okay? There, I mean, other than applications when they come up and, and other consistency reviews and things of that sort, those, other than that, the ORC is the singular most important thing that we need to kind of work through that process, so.
What tools do we have at our disposal? Because bringing things here and talking about it on paper and then going and forgetting what we talked about is like really inefficient. And I'm thinking like, at work, we're not doing that. We've got three or four people working on a Word document in a collaboration space we track changes on. Do we have any tools at our disposal and what can we do legally as a body? In terms of just collaborating in one place and seeing the changes on the fly? We'd get through this so much quicker.
Well, I think the ORC could certainly do that, because that's not a quorum. But I'm not even so sure if the whole, well, I guess the whole committee, right, Chris?
Yeah.
It would be, it'd be a notice meeting.
Yeah.
So, the ORC, all right, so.
The ORC, the less than.
Do it in Google Sheets.
I was just going to say, yeah, you can use Google.
And then just mark it up that way and, you know, people are going to get tired of this, so you can fold people in and out at work, right? Where you can assign one person only to look at spelling syntax, right? And just, you know, kind of have a pipeline, a filter that you go through, because it's just.
Well, and I think it, the designation of a primary writer and then secondary reviewers and all the roles are important too. So that you're not just this cluster, you know what?
Right.
Because that's what happens a lot of times at work. You just get this thing that never gets finished.
So, we, we know there are workflow, workflow tools out there and there's SharePoint sites that could be utilized that allows the collaborate, or another collaboration tool that allows people to simultaneously work within documents and making updates. And there's version, you can call back versions when you have a, when you have a data problem or data entry problem or you don't remember exactly what it was you did. I don't know if this town has, has access to that. So, that, that becomes a limitation.
Can we use, just use a free Google account? Do this, as long as it's secure?
So, if there's a, if there's a free tool out there, I'm happy to, I mean, that was a whole, that was a whole concept of just getting a template together so we could at least start to formulate a foundation for, but I didn't go searching Google for free. If there's, if there's free tools out there, I'm happy to jump on board with free tools and.
As long as there's not more than three members, use it.
Yeah, there's, well, there's two, so like I, my Long Hill email address is a Gmail account, which means I have access to Microsoft Word and Microsoft Excel, PowerPoint and whatever, which you can share with any other Gmail account, which is I think what Scott is saying.
Yeah.
But I think at that point, it now becomes, if everybody has access to it.
Well, you can't give everybody.
Can't.
Right.
You just don't give it. You just restrict the.
Keep it nice and form.
But then I don't know if it's resolving what you're trying to get at, which is in our discussions, aren't you?
Here's what it'd be. I go home tonight. I've got a Google account. I create a sheet, one of these ordinances, and I share it with two other people that are on ORC.
Right.
And we're writing it and making comments and track changes on the fly. And if someone makes a change, it redlines through and they put a comment, it's like, oh, no, I think this is, this is an HPEC, this is a commission. You know, something like that.
You, me, and Teresa on, in that document.
In that, because I'm the owner, decides who they share with and I know legally, they can't share it with a quorum.
Correct.
And then one, once that document's done, then just do a clean version and email it out to everybody for review.
So, then.
And a notice meeting, so.
And notice meeting.
Joe goes home.
Interesting.
So, hold on. So, Joe goes home, right?
Rob.
Bob.
Bob, sorry. Why did I do that to you? I can't even get your first name, now your last name.
We're on a roll, so I couldn't get any longer.
I thought it was a nickname, honestly.
If there was a Joe, and Joe, if there was a Joe, and Joe went home, worked on the document and had his account set up and shared it with me and Teresa, we would only, that would be those three people looking at that. So, you would never have a quorum.
Right.
So, because that then takes away with the problem of having to, you know, we're editing, trying to work on documents and then we ought to make everything public, right? We're not trying to hide anything, so for those conspiracy folks out there, there's no conspiracy in ordinances.
You want to get the document here ninety-eight percent of the way.
That's exactly right. That is the objective.
You're doing the last mile here in the meeting.
Yes, that is the.
By the next ordinance you queue up, send it to me and I'll put it in one and.
Yeah.
Do I have to have a Gmail account?
Does everybody? I think everybody here has a Gmail. Do you have a Gmail?
Yeah, I have a Gmail.
That's easy.
Well, let's try it. Let's try it.
That'll get me off of some mailing lists.
Let's try it. I'll try to share it with your, your, we'll try to share it with.
Okay. We'll do a dry run and see if that works.
Okay.
Perfect. Great suggestion. I think that will greatly assist.
So, three maps, let's say.
Because, listen, your template is fantastic and it's a great way to organize and think about it, but the shared document thing, I think you're going to find to get through this a lot more.
Look, I'm, I'm looking, I'm all about collaboration teamwork and getting stuff done. That's, that's, that's the objective here.
Okay.
And get a bonus at the end of the year.
So, can I just clarify one point? So, if it's, if you are a member of the Ordinance Subcommittee, so communication between those members can be unlimited.
Correct.
However, if you are given an assignment or accept an assignment and you're not, and you're working, not part of that Subcommittee and you're working on an ordinance, then that person would send it just to the members of the ordinance committee.
We would be part of that.
Communication.
Me and two, you and two members of the ORC would be mem, would be part, having access to that document.
It's limited to three.
Right, because what we don't want to do is create a.
I know you don't want to create a quorum.
That's correct. That's correct.
I'm not a member of the Ordinance Committee.
Right.
But you're taking the lead on a new ordinance.
But I'm saying I'll volunteer and help with something, then I can send it to two.
Correct.
Out of the, how many? Three members?
Or, or somebody can, yes, three total, or somebody can invite you to support that ordinance.
Or he could send it to one and that person.
Send it to one and that's.
You know what? Let us go, go away.
Tom, aren't you the Chair of the Committee?
Yeah, so just send it to the Chair.
I would just say, anybody, any member who's not on the committee, just send it directly to you.
Or make me, or make me a member of that document, so I can see the document.
Correct.
So, now, don't send it to me, because then you might as well just work in Word and then send it to me. That's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to create a SharePoint, a virtual SharePoint of this document.
It's an interesting question whether or not that would constitute a public meeting.
Well, that's your homework to go away and figure that out.
I was going to say, but why would it? Because if they're meeting in person or on Zoom to discuss it, whether they're working on a document or not.
That would be one thing.
That, so ultimately.
Adding changes to a shared document, is that a meeting?
Yeah, but there could be comments. Somebody could be adding comments. You could be, you could be communicating about.
It's all about making decisions.
Yes.
And you're having a dialogue.
None of this in draft form is operable anyway, until it comes to a board of public, right?
Exactly. Yeah. I mean, let me look in it for you.
Okay, well, we're going to do, we're going to do a test run anyway, because of the requirement of the committee.
The ORC?
It's one of those interesting technological issues.
But get creative. We've got to get into the twenty-first century with our laws, so.
How many people can be on the ORC committee?
Twenty-five years into the new century. I'm sorry?
Can you tell the.
Well, we're not four and that's your ticket.
Because we just had Bob.
You can have four.
It could be four.
I understood you can have four on a committee, but you can only have three working on something.
No, you're going to.
That's the limitation. It sounds like that's the limitation of the application.
That's a technical, is that the tech? Why don't you guys test it and let us know?
We'll come back to you. We're going to go do our homework.
Is there any other business to come before the board?
Nothing from the ORC.
Don, I don't know if you want to, over the next few weeks, give some thought to like, I mean, we will too, but how, I know you're, it's on your mind of the map.
Yes.
And like, kind of like the most efficient way.
Yeah, and we need, Joe's been diligently working on that. A lot of it has been driven on some of the sewer permitting, but that was a good driver to get all of this done, so now I think we're in a position where we can do that. The only other thing I wanted to add, well, it's cool, Liz, guys.
Oh, sorry.
Just real quick. The only other thing I want to add is, coming into the fall, I do want to have some volunteers reach out. I think it's time to get back into some of the different boards and commissions. For example, Shade Tree, to make sure we attend a meeting. I'd like to go to the Environmental Commission, which I signed up for. I think it's important, I think, Tom, you were doing open space, is to, you know, I think our presence is important, just to, again, circle back, see how the committee's doing, remind in regards to some of the goals and objectives out of the master plan. So, Bob and Pam, I'll look to you guys too, to see how you guys could potentially get involved with some of the different groups. I don't know if anyone on the board is really attending the Board of Education meetings. Dennis Sandow used to diligently do that. We really haven't had a liaison or someone who at least attends those meetings. I know it's a pretty big commitment.
Is it the Long Hill or the Wachong, or the high school, or both?
Yeah, it's, it's Long Hills associated with their schools. It gets complicated.
Is it regional school district?
Yes.
Well, the high schools, K through eight, and then you got the regional.
I think the most important one for us is really more the K through eight.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you could, one of those members of the board could reach out to Tom Grosskopf, who's the vice chair.
Yes, and that's the other thing.
Who also sits on the Board of Ed.
Right. But it's important that we connect with these different groups and we can talk about that more into the fall.
Does it?
Okay. Yes.
I just became a member of the seniors of Long Hill, so I've seen opportunity there to be able to present to them what's going on.
Absolutely. A power broker in the seniors group.
You got a lot of power there.
They're a pretty lively group. I was surprised.
I'm sure. Excellent.
Are you too young to be in that group?
Yeah, yeah, it's. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Please.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So, one, one more thing. You should have the annual report by the next meeting.
Okay, from the zoning.
Zoning Board, yes, because the zoning Board next week will be hopefully finalized.
Is generators on that?
What's that?
Is generators on that?
Generators are on every list, yes.
And sheds.
Yes. And sheds, yes.
And sheds.
That's on my, the zoning officers list.
Didn't we start the year on sheds? I feel like we started the year on sheds. Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
Second.
All favor.